We'll get going right at 4 o'clock. Because I realize it's the last thing between us and the weekend.
Unfortunately, not for me, Kurt, so you know, I have a hard stop at four. Or five, excuse me.
I forgot, Bill, they usually go to 8 o'clock on Fridays.
Yeah, unfortunately, that seems to be the case these days.
We should get through it in an hour, I hope. Is there any reason we can't get going two minutes early if we have a quorum? Okay, we can't, all right. I always try to break the rule. I'll defer to your official clock, Matt. You tell me when we can go. Is Andy Grover on the line? Have we seen him?
Yes.
Oh, there he is, top right in the Hollywood Squares. Hey, Andy.
Okay, let's go.
Great, it's 4 o'clock sharp. Why don't we call the meeting to order? Florence, could you please take the role for us?
Kurt Liebeck.
Here.
David Hill.
Present.
Linda Clark. Don Kiao. Bill Gilbert. Kelly Roach.
Present.
Cindy Sitaway.
Here.
And Sherry Ibarra.
Here.
Thanks, yeah, Sherry's on the phone, right? That's her number there. Great. Thank you, Superintendent Ibarra. We have a quorum. I appreciate everyone's flexibility in getting together this Friday. I tend to low special meetings, but given the circumstances, I thought it was important for all of us to come together. Before we get going, I'd just like to welcome Cindy and Kelly to their first state Board of Education meeting. We really appreciate you joining us, and we thank you in advance for your service. And we look forward to your input on all of these issues. So thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. The timing of this meeting is really driven by the state's decision last Thursday to put the entire state and our entire health system into crisis standards of care. And I thought it just might be helpful, particularly for our new board members, to just step back a minute and just, I wanted to provide some introductory comments on how this board has managed through this pandemic to set the stage for this conversation. But, you know, really since the pandemic hit in March of 2020, this board has prioritized the health and safety of our communities and getting as many kids in school and having in-person instruction as we can and trying to balance those two things. And in the early days, when we knew nothing about the seriousness and direction of the pandemic, that meant fully remote learning. In the spring of 2020 and over the last 18 months, we've, all of us, have done the best we can to support our school districts and universities to accomplish those two goals that I described. Our role is somewhat different between higher ed and K-12. And the K-12 system, as you all know, we're a local controlled state. So our philosophy has been that decisions as it relates to the pandemic response are best made at the local school board level. We've trusted our local school boards to make the best decisions they can, given the circumstances in their communities, recognizing there's a big difference between how the pandemic is trending from places like Boise, Idaho to Salmon, Idaho. So we've really, we've really left the local school boards to make those pandemic-related decisions. And our role, you know, in the 32 times we met last year was to really knock down barriers, find resources, do anything we could within our powers, the state board, to help the school districts manage through the pandemic. And so that has been our approach, and it remains our approach to this day. On the university side, it's a little different. You know, this board serves essentially as the Board of Trustees and Board of Regents for our four-year institutions, and so we have a governance role. And to date, from a statutory standpoint, the institutions are required to have an infectious disease plan. As a board, we've delegated that authority to our presidents. And I think our presidents and their leadership teams have done a phenomenal job at leading and managing our universities since the start of the pandemic and to this point. And so that kind of gives you the historical basis of how we've managed through that. The reason I wanted to pull this group together is because, as I mentioned at the start of this, I think the fact that we've gone into crisis standards of care raises the bar in terms of, I think, how we need to be thinking about our first priority, which is the health and safety of our students and our staff and our communities. And so I wanted to bring this group together to kind of talk about where we are as we sit here today, recognizing that things change on a daily and weekly basis, and just have a conversation about what things we need to be thinking about and make sure this full board understands sort of the current state of play, both in K-12 and higher ed. So to that end, we sort of have three parts of the agenda. We invited Dr. Turner to join us. Thank you, Dr. Turner, for your time. She's going to give us the high-level view of sort of the current state of affairs as it relates to the pandemic in the state, and we'll have an opportunity to ask her questions. And then we have Andy Grover joining us from the IASA. Andy is on the phone every minute of every day with superintendents across the state, has a pretty good perspective on the K-12 system, so we'll hear from Andy. And then we'll move to higher ed and go through each institution just to kind of get a sense of how we're doing on each of our four-year campuses. So through all that, we'll have time for questions and discussions, and we'll go from there. So with that, Dr. Turner, I would turn it over to you, and I guess my coaching would be, I don't think we need to go through the whole presentation that was in the pre-read, but I think if you could just focus on sort of what you're seeing in terms of the students we serve and some of the trend lines there, as well as your current thinking based on, and we've all seen that scary forecast that's been in place in sort of early August, which had us peeking out at sort of 30,000 cases a week. Just interested in your current assessment of where we are today, and to the extent you have a crystal ball, what do you think is coming at us over the next month? So, Dr. Turner, I'll turn it to you.
Okay, great, thanks. Just want to do one more mic check if you can hear me okay.
Yes, just fine.
Great, okay, I'm going to do a really quick flyby. Happy to take questions at the end, but this is going to be a really quick, high-level sort of status update. The first thing is, as of today, this is what our trend looks like for the last 30 days. We hit a record for 2021 on September 21st. 1,800 cases were reported in one day. Paying attention here, our daily average case count is well over 1,000 right now, so, and the trend line is moving upwards. So that's, if anything, that's what you're supposed to take away from here. Oh, by the way, you guys are all getting the data that isn't public yet, so I just updated all of these. This is a display, cases among school-aged children, and right here, just wanted to note that there was a record number of cases reported among children between the ages of 5 and 17 years, which is what we kind of think of as school age during the week that ended last Saturday. So those gray bars are 5 to 12, and then the blue bars are 13 to 17-year-olds. And these data are displayed publicly on the School Resources page on coronavirus.idah.gov. This is what our cases look like among adults 18 to 29 years old, and as you all probably recall, back in 2020, this was the population that things got crazy in when we had our first surge last summer of 2020. However, we just hit a new record for 2021 for the week ending last week in this age group, so it's not just impacting our littles, it's impacting our young adults as well. This is the projection that has been probably seen by all of you. This was a projection that was done in the summer of 2021. And this projection estimated that we could see up to 28,000 cases per week in Idaho by mid-October, right here at this peak. This gray area is sort of the worst-case scenario curve. In Idaho, we're tracking pretty close to the high end of those projections that were created that last summer. This black bar down here is the average of all of the models. There's anywhere between 9 and 12 models, depending on the round. But we were hitting, we were hitting the high end of those models and have been. I do want to let you know that there is an updated projection. This one was released this week, so you have not seen this yet. This projection is estimating up to 21,000 cases per week in Idaho by mid-November, so moving the peak out a little bit later. The assumptions of this model is that there's no vaccine available to children less than 12 years of age. It's been approved by November 1st, and we have the Delta variant circulating. And of course, if we do get an approval of a childhood vaccine before November 1st, this projection may very well change. But the modelers are suggesting, and you may have heard in the news this week, that we may have peaked. There's some sense that we may have peaked nationwide. However, I just want to point out that Idaho has been trending towards the higher end of model estimates for the last three months. So I'm in a wait-and-see mode right now. I want to see where we go. This black line is the average of all the models, and you can see that they're thinking we're plateauing and we might be headed downward as far as case counts. But I'd really like to see a couple more weeks before I celebrate that we may have peaked. But this is the most current projection out there right now. Again, we've been following kind of that outside of this gray, this gray curve, so I'd like to see a little bit, a little bit more time go by before I call it good.
So, Dr. Turner, just so I can understand what this is, Kurt. So are you saying that the current estimate, originally when I saw that model, it had us peaking at 30,000 cases a week. Are you saying now the best, or maybe is that a worst-case estimate that it's 20? Or is there just a lot of uncertainty in terms of what that peak is? And then if you could just comment on, originally, we had it peaking in mid-October. Can you speak to why you think that's now 30 days beyond that?
Yeah, so first of all, these projections are developed by a kind of a coalition of universities and other entities, and they all submit modeling, their models, and then they're aggregated, and they create kind of an ensemble model. So this is the earlier one. This was a projection that was based on vaccination rates in Idaho of less than 50%, which is true, and a high transmissible variant circulating population, also true. And we sort of thought that this estimate was like crazy high, but we, these dotted lines are our actual case counts that we're seeing every week, and we were tracking pretty close to the high end of those models. And they were estimating roughly 28,000 to 30,000 cases per week in Idaho by mid-October. With the increased, with the case counts that have increased so precipitously in the last two months, this was not expected in the model. Keep in mind, this black line is kind of what the average was, which is what was, quote, "expected," unquote. So given that the amount of cases that have occurred since this projection, the modelers are thinking that between vaccination rates plus the amount of people who've been infected and may be immune for the next, you know, six to seven months based on antibodies to, you know, natural infection, that our case counts could actually come down a little bit because so many people, a lot more people were infected than was predicted in a short time period. So that's why this number is coming down by about 10,000 in a week is because of the sheer number of people who've been infected in the last two months. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. And then I just have one more slide. This is not something that's talked about a lot, frankly, and we don't, these data aren't anywhere on any public dashboard. But we are seeing an increased number of pediatric hospitalizations. These are kiddos who have confirmed COVID-19. This is the starting of the year, so this was during our surge this winter, and then this is, this is the last two weeks right here, and you can see that we've hit new highs. So we've got a census of over 40 kiddos in the hospital, week to week, with confirmed COVID. And some of you may know this, but for really severe, complicated cases in eastern Idaho and northern Idaho, they are often hospitalized outside of the state, so they would not be included here because these are just Idaho hospitals. So that's my last slide. That was a super, super fast flyby.
So maybe a super, in terms of summarizing, just for this group, is it your view that things are likely to get worse before they get better, and we're probably going to be living with this for another 48 weeks before we see relief? Is that a fair summary?
You know, as with everything with this pandemic, I, you know, I hate to speculate because the minute we speculate, we're wrong. But I have not seen a decrease in case counts recently, and I'll reflect back on that very, that very first slide I showed you of our trend. Our trend is still going upward over time. I haven't seen it getting much flatter. So I'm not confident in saying that we've reached a peak until I see some definite plateauing of our trend line, which I'm not seeing right now. I will tell you that the number of reports that we're receiving and that our local public health districts are investigating does not appear to have decreased over the last few days. We kind of look at those raw numbers. And so they're still, you know, working the same amount of work they were doing a couple of weeks ago. I see no indication as of today that we are heading downward. We may be heading towards a plateau, which I'll take that over continual increases.
So a quick question, if I could. So you're looking at case counts. Are you building test positivity ratio into these curves? And are you guys seeing anything in terms of, you know, obviously, the last couple, three weeks, it's been amazing, the increase in positivity ratio. It seems, it's short, but the last maybe week or so, that's maybe plateauing. Is that built at all into this thinking, or is that too early to speculate on as well?
Yeah, so actually, I'm the one that develops those percent positivities, and so let me just tell you that the time between when a person gets their specimen collected and we get the result back has been increasing, so that interval has been increasing. So the current, the most current week's percent positivity, which we just published yesterday, is very preliminary. You may have noticed that we revised the percent positivity for two weeks ago up by almost a full percentage point. So that trend, I'm, no, I'm not saying that that trend is going down right now until I get, you know, I look backwards a week.
Second question, as you think about the state, and obviously, it's a state with, you know, three pretty distinct geographies, or, you know, how do you think, knowing that we're seeing significant numbers in all three areas, but are there any differences as you look at the data in the trend lines and the slopes of those curves between the three areas of the state that might lead us to, you know, different assumptions in terms of timing?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a, yeah, it's a great question. What we're seeing right now is we're seeing continued significant increases in the northern, the Panhandle part of the, part of the state. We're seeing it, very, very high case rates in southwest Idaho, particularly in the west end of the Treasure Valley. And we're seeing relatively lower increases, if you can, you know, that sounds like an oxymoron, in the eastern part of the state. The eastern, the very, very far eastern part of the state does not seem to be seeing the same level of increase in cases that we're seeing in the southwest and the Panhandle. They were hit very, very, very hard last winter, and it may be that they've got just enough natural immunity because of their spike that it's not hitting them as hard.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Turner? So, Dr. Turner, we really appreciate that oversight. I mean, I think having that broad perspective as we have this discussion is very helpful. So thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Everyone, take care.
Okay. So that's the playing field we are currently dealing with and likely will be dealing with. Andy, why don't I turn it over to you to give the board just kind of your 30,000-foot view of what you're hearing and seeing across our K-12 system as we sit here today?
Okay, thank you, President Liebeck, and for those of you who don't know me, my name's Dr. Andy Grover. I was superintendent for almost 13 years in a rural district in Idaho and have been the head of the Idaho Association of School Administrators for about the past year and a half. And just over the last couple of months, I've had the opportunity to travel around. Most, well, all of our districts are open now. Everything from pretty much the Treasure Valley down opened and have been open for the past six weeks, and most of northern Idaho has been open for, right after Labor Day, so for the past three weeks. And what we saw as schools opened, we kind of opened as you would generally think we would in some kind of normal fashion. We had kids come back. Our counts were all very good. There was, there's quite a bit of growth around the state, and then that's really where the tale of six weeks changes. You know, first days of school, again, we had people there. Then three weeks of school, we started seeing districts that average above 90% attendance start dropping to the low 80 percentile. And there's a number of reasons for this. A lot of it is that we do do a lot more testing, so you saw positive COVID tests come out with students. Contact tracing always sends people home. We have kids that are just sick, that aren't dealing with COVID, but just sick with the flu or other things. We have some kids working, and then we have some that we're not sure why they're not there. But these are kids that started in the school six weeks ago and then have been gone for, you know, anywhere from two days to two weeks. So this, one of the first issues that's jumped out for educators is the ADA with students in the seats versus enrollment, because just the way that we're seeing kids come and go into school, it's getting harder as we, and schools are also entering back into the virtual world. It's really hard to count that ADA with students being in their seats with what's going on in the schools. We really have created this culture is that if you're sick, stay at home, and that's kind of what we're seeing. The second issue that's arisen, and we knew it was going to be an issue, is the fact that districts can't find classified staff. You know, most districts pay for classified staff starts about $9.50 up to around $11. And if you look at anything from McDonald's to whatever, you know, they're averaging $13 to $15 an hour. We saw one sign the other day that said $15 to $20 an hour, and we'll pay you daily. So when there's those kind of things for us to compete against, we don't have a chance. I mean, we just don't have employees, and we've seen anywhere from two or three classified staff all the way up to 60 classified staff that districts are missing around the state. So there's just a lack of labor, and that stems everything from bus drivers to custodians to student aides, paraprofessionals, you know, all those different areas. And then also our substitute teachers. Districts that have averaged 150 to 200 substitute teachers in their districts now have 30 and 35. You know, I talk to superintendents almost every day. They're saying, you know, we're missing 11 subs today that we're trying to cover with either administrators, with either teachers using their prep. There's lots of different reasons why they're shutting down, and in the first five weeks, we had three districts shut down, all due to labor, and they were shut down for short periods of time. Currently, we have three districts shut down. Two of those are due to labor and one's due to student cases. So we are seeing schools start to shut down with what's happening, and one of those districts that's shut down now is in a hybrid mode. And again, if they're trying to figure out ADA based on students in their seats, it makes it really hard, so we need to look at the enrollment. But in the end, it's labor that's going to shut our schools down as the pandemic goes on. There just aren't enough people to keep our schools open. And again, we're seeing that in all areas and aspects of the economy, not just schools, but it's certainly affecting our schools. And then obviously, with COVID and the D-variants that has come out, has really changed our, instead of feeling like six weeks into school, we feel like we've been in school six months, and it's really putting pressure on the schools. You know, last year, we really didn't have a large number of students that contracted COVID, or at least the testing wasn't there to show they did, where this year, that's a different story. We are showing students that are testing positive, and, you know, people are testing more, and we're seeing a lot more student cases in our schools, which puts them out. You know, the other big thing that COVID has opened the door again is conflict. You know, whether you want to wear a mask, whether you don't want to wear a mask, contact tracing, you know, some schools do it, some schools don't do it very well, but there's no consistency between districts even if they touch each other. So there's big issues with that. You know, whether you require vaccinations or don't, you know, we have split communities. We have communities that have taken over board meetings. We have communities that, you know, have barred the way into meetings, and, you know, parents that have done this. We're just seeing this huge split, which then causes split in our school boards. It causes a split within, you know, our administration and our teachers. There's just a lot of pressure on folks right now, and they're struggling. So the other thing we're starting to see, and also we have some issues with athletics, but I'm not even going to go into that. Apparently, we have eight teachers that have, or administrators that have passed away since we started school in August from COVID. And we are starting to see now that we have teachers returning to work even if they're sick. And the reason for that is, is because, one, there's no one to take their place. We don't have subs. The other issue is that with the, with the change of, you know, and again, this is every local district gets to make this choice, but how they choose if a teacher gets sick, whether they use their sick days, whether they, you know, last year, we had COVID dollars that allowed for, to cover those days, so teachers didn't lose sick days. But teachers feel very responsible for their classes and know that there's not a sub, and one of their other teachers may have to use their prep or something to oversee their classes, so they're coming to school. You know, with administrators, I've spent the last couple of weeks with administrators across the state, and they're finding that they're spending a lot of their days right now subbing. I talked to one administrator that takes two science classes every day in the gym and oversees those, again, due to lack of this. And what's coming out of this is that we're starting to see issues with things like evaluations, because principals don't have time to talk to teachers. Teachers don't have time to go in and have conferences with principals. So we're just seeing some of the things that we have to get done. Some of the testing is really starting to weigh down on these guys because they don't know how to do it. And then really comes down to three main themes, and probably what we would ask the board to really look at. The first one is the enrollment rule. Let's get that fixed so superintendents don't have to worry about how they're going to fund schools. The other is funding classified staff. We've got a couple of things I know we're working on, but continuing to look at that. You know, we need to look at what requirements are really necessary for school districts right now. If our personnel is all being used for whatever, to staff, you know, everything from cafeteria to custodial, we need to look at those areas that we can eliminate and take that off for a year and just reduce some of those requirements if possible. Another area that we're finding that is causing some grief is the freezing of PSF in last year's budget. Because we have growth in most districts, those dollars have to come from somewhere. Generally, they come from that PSF fund. This year, while we have some SIR $3, people are sitting on those dollars because with PSF frozen, they're going to have to use their discretionary dollars in order to pay for that. So we're also missing some opportunities to maybe upgrade some of, you know, our facilities or whatever we can use those funds for. You know, and then finally, just finding some ways we can support our local school boards and our schools. They are taking a beating out there, and I don't know that there's one side that's right or wrong, you know, but there certainly are vocal sides out there. And we're going to see more contested races in November for board spots than we've ever seen in the past, you know, and people are really nervous because we're mid-year into school, and we could see some huge changes in these school boards, which changes the whole culture of the school. So, you know, if there's ways, as you guys think about things and we talk about things, that we can just show that we're supporting schools and we're there and we're open to their needs. So, Kurt, I appreciate the time on here, and I know I jumped through that pretty fast, but I'll stand for any questions that you guys have.
Thanks, Andy. That's an excellent summary of where we are today. Any questions or comments for Andy?
I have a question.
Yeah, Sean.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just curious if... Thank you, Chairman. I'm just curious if you have a guesstimate of the cases that are in schools that aren't tracking? Or if they're not tracking, they're not, or if they are tracking, they're not sharing their case numbers with?
For those not tracking it, the number zero, right? I mean, we, we just don't know. But what we do know is that in some of these rural districts, we know that the parents have tested positive for COVID and their kids still show up to school the next day. So I can tell you, we are seeing some of those things. But the health districts, you know, have so many cases they're dealing with that schools generally don't even find out that they have someone that, that went through, you know, our, our health districts until long past the 10 days or 14 days that are due. As far as a real number, I have no idea. You know, we don't have a great testing system in place. And the other part is that because we have 115 districts and 77 charters and they can all do whatever they do differently, it makes it really hard to track from any level on how we're, how we're testing kids or if we are testing kids.
Okay, thanks.
Superintendent Barra, I can't see whether, I can't see your phone on the screen I'm looking at. If you're there, would you have anything to add based on the conversations you're having through the State Department to Andy's summary?
I'm here. I am on in person. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. I can see and hear you. Yeah.
Sorry, a little late to the party in face. I had physical therapy for that shoulder. But yeah, I do. I, I think some of these things are not things that unfortunately we can address as a state board. But what we are doing, I can talk a little bit about that is recently we just received the $10 million for the substitutes and for the classified. That includes your custodians, your folks, you know, that work with kids. Maybe they're the playground supervisor, that $10 million that's going out to districts will be administered by my department. So we are excited about that. There was a press release today. So that should relieve a little bit of the employment issue there. My department, you know, the governor has also freed up state agencies across the state to go ahead and substitute and get out in some of those positions. That'll help relieve as well. I know, you know, I have over 100 staff members who are very interested in helping and we are getting ready to deploy some of those folks out to help even myself. I'm excited about that. I'm going to go back out and, and substitute and help the districts. So a lot of that stuff, you know, we're getting the same stories that Andy just shared. Testing is an issue and I'm working with the Department of Health and Welfare on that. We did have, you know, we had a task force put together for that. And we do realize that there are some issues there. I did have staff set on that, that task force. But we meet, we're meeting again, the statewide coronavirus working group on Monday. I foresee having some of these discussions. Attendance is a huge concern. We've been talking about that for a really long time, but that's one thing that we discussed as a board a long time ago is moving away from attendance and moving to an enrollment based system for funding. That rule that expired, it made some folks pretty nervous. And now you understand why it was so important for us to move to an enrollment based system. So that's really all I have right now. Unless there's questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions or comments from the board on the current state of affairs in K-12? And clearly there's some issues we're going to have to talk about here as we move forward. And I think, you know, Andy's, you know, superintendent said there's been some work and some solutions that have been, have developed to get at some of these things. But there's, I think, when he's talking about, you know, educator morale, board morale, how is the state board, can we support those leaders out there who have just done an incredible job, in my view, managing through this pandemic, but have gotten very little recognition for the work they've done. In fact, in many communities have been vilified. I, you know, I don't think that's something we can resolve today, but I think as a board, we need to, we need to think about that and talk about it here as we move forward. But any other questions for Andy or Superintendent? Any, not that we can take action today, but any thoughts on, you know, as I stated in my preamble, we've managed this pandemic from a local control standpoint, you know, recognizing there is political friction, recognizing that districts are going to do things differently. We basically, as a board, said that decisions, the best decisions are made closest to the community. Is there, does anybody think we need to make a significant change in light of where we are? Or is this the right approach and we just need to address some of the specific issues that Andy spoke about?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on the K-12 issue, those are independently elected boards. And so I'm not sure what we as a state board can do in a unilateral way. I think the superintendent outlined things that can happen through her department. And, and then I think Mr. Grover outlined some specifics we could help with as a state board. On the funding formula, some of the temporary things that we might, that we did last year that we might be able to do again. But although there's grave concern and I have empathy, I don't know that we're in a position to do something unilaterally on the, on the K-12 level.
Thank you. Any other comments on this K-12? Okay. Well, thank you, Andy. Appreciate your time today. Keep us posted.
Thank you all.
Let's transition to higher ed and Mike. Again, I think we have a slightly different role here to play because we are the board of trustees or regents for these institutions from a governance standpoint. And we have delegated the authority and I think our presidents have done just a magnificent job along with their teams in keeping our system functioning and our kids and our students in school and since the beginning of the pandemic. And so what I thought would be helpful just for the board today is to just go around the horn and hear from each of our institutions in terms of what's the, what's the current state of play? And what, if anything, they need from their board for support. So Dr. Pemberton, why don't we start with you at Lewis and Clark?
Thank you very much. Hello, members of the board. Let me start off by just giving some basic information about the daily updates that we get. So we are tracking, of course, infection rates and we track that on a daily basis. Of course, that's reported infection rates, which we are very aware could be quite different than reality. But we graph those data. In fact, if you'll allow me, I'll show you some of the data that we have. You can see, this is an example of an email that we get. This is today, these are today's data, 90 total infections since the start of school. Nine are active with one individual in school-based isolation. We also track the vaccination rates. So we get daily vaccination rate updates. And what I can tell you in that regard is that our overall employee vaccination rate is topping 67, 68% right now. So compared to the state of Idaho and certainly our valley, that's quite high. Our face-to-face degree student vaccination rate is around 34%. Residents live students slightly higher, 46%. Student athletes a little over 50%. And our part-time, non-degree seeking students are 15%. So we are tracking those data. We have our, our plan of operation to deal with the pandemic involves weekly surveillance testing that individuals may opt out of through vaccination proof or medical or religious exemption. And the weekly testing is, is actually working pretty well. There are individuals who do not test and when we give those data, we follow up. We follow up with phone calls, texts, emails, et cetera, to remind people that they need to engage weekly testing unless they've opted out or unless they've vaccinated, et cetera. And, and it's pretty easy. We have a total number of individuals, students and employees who are in face-to-face situations, subtract out the vaccinated, subtract out the opt-outs, and then you have a cluster of individuals that should be tested on a weekly basis. The test results, we are very fortunate to have partnered with the state of Idaho to be able to make this possible through the Vault testing contract. And the test results are sent to the individual and to public health. We are unable to estimate the positivity rate of those test results, largely because we at LC don't personally get those data. That's been a very important part of our process is that we would not personally collect vaccination cards. We just have somebody show it if they wanted to prove that. And we will not personally house or collect the actual health data in terms of the test response. And the response data from Vault goes to the individual, as I said, as well as to public health, realizing it goes to the public health unit of the individual's hometown, home. So it may not be reported here. So we cannot really, in a very accurate way at all, reflect on positivity rates on these data. Although we are in conference with Vault testing to see if they have the ability to help us with that. We communicate a day, we communicate through our Monday message every week. We have Tuesdays at two open Zoom office hours with follow-up interactions. We have a COVID dashboard that publishes our infection and isolation data. And that is updated on weekdays and we have a coronavirus resource page that is updated at least weekly and sometimes on a more ongoing basis. We have a masking requirement on campus for interior spaces. And though that masking requirement was put in place to onboard as the semester started, it was mandated through September 17th. We looked at the data across a variety of metrics, CDC guidelines, public health, the crisis level in our, in our state and our, and our region in terms of healthcare. And then also, of course, our own infection rates, et cetera. And we have extended the masking requirement in interior spaces at least to October 15th, at which time we will reevaluate it. And I will say, while last spring, when we had masking requirements, there was quite a bit of ire and it was fairly unpleasant trying to enforce it. It's much tamer now. It's much calmer. It's really become almost a norm of operation on the campus at this time. And we are getting very minimal, I wouldn't say none, we're getting minimal pushback in that regard. That's sort of, I think, the basic information. We, like other colleges and universities, are incentivizing vaccination among students. If they're vaccinated by October 1, that date's coming up, they can get 100 warrior bucks that they can spend on food on campus or books in the bookstore. And they can be entered in a drawing for a tuition scholarship for spring semester. Some students have reported a lot of enthusiasm about that and then others are, don't really care. So it just kind of varies across the world. Do you have specific questions or Kurt, is that the gist level that you wanted to hear from, from us at this time?
Very helpful, but it sounds like the protocols that you have in place are working and there's no risk of you, at least at this stage where we sit here today, of having to move to a remote model. Is that how you're feeling?
Absolutely. No, I believe that we are in a stable, in a protocol compliant mode of operation that we are managing. You can even see from the graph that I showed, basically our infection rates are going down in terms of the actual relative rate. And we are well within our isolation capacities with only one person in isolation right now. So we absolutely believe we can continue to manage this and have every intention of being live and continuing our in-person operations. And believe it's working for now. We'll see what happens. It's a day-by-day thing.
Thank you, Dr. Pemberton. Any question for Dr. Pemberton?
Just one question, if I might. Talks about students a lot. What about your faculty and other staff? Are you suffering like the local education authorities or is it?
Thank you, thank you, Board Member Hill. The, it's interesting, when I was listening to the K-12, here's what I would say. Yeah, if there were bullets that you could help us, of course enrollment is going to be down. Hold us harmless on EWA. We have no control over the fact that the pandemic is making people not want to come to school. It's really impacting our career technical education enrollment. Classified staff salaries, absolutely. I was just looking at an org chart today. We have four vacancies in custodial staff because we pay $11 an hour. And of course, they go across the river in Washington, make quite a little bit of that, where that and a McDonald's in this very town at $15 an hour. It's hard for us to maintain cleaning protocols if we don't have any cleaning staff to do it. We all chip in, individuals on this call, Vice President Hanson, Vice President Chilson, myself, we're all cleaning and helping, et cetera, because we don't have people to do it. So yes, we're having real problems with regard to staffing. We are having problems with regard to enrollment. It's not down as far as I thought it might be, but career technical in particular is, is struggling right now. And I don't think it's going to turn around anytime fast in that regard. I will say this, though, when it comes to faculty and classrooms, the overwhelming sentiment is that they, like the students, want to be live in person with each other. And they are willing to endure safety protocols from now till whenever, I suppose, to try to make sure we can continue that. We've also upgraded our filtrations in rooms. We, of course, have nice weather, windows open, outside activities, et cetera. So we're managing. But thank you, Board Member Hill, for that, for that question. Because staffing, particularly among the classified ranks, is a real, is a real personnel problem. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this goes a whole lot longer exactly how that ends up rolling out because there's only 24 hours in a day and there's a whole lot of stuff that has to be dealt with.
Thank you, Dr. Pemberton. So I'm going to be, I'm looking at the clock here. I know Bill Gilbert has a hard close at five. And I want to make sure we get through each of the institutional reports here. So what I'd ask, Tony, you're going to cover the U of I, who's taking the lead up there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess for the, for the purpose of this conversation, I guess what I'm most, I think we're most interested in are the protocols you put in place working? Are things stable or not? And what, if anything, do you need from this board at this time, recognizing that things are changing pretty rapidly? So do you keep it at that level so we can get through the next three and 15 minutes? I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, Chairman. And also joining us is Provost Tori Lawrence, in case we get additional questions. So at a real high level, the Panhandle is having its struggles. But here specifically in Moscow, we are focusing on vaccination versus testing. Our local hospital did say as of June 1, 82.5% of the hospitalizations are unvaccinated people. And then just on Dr. Turner's slides, we didn't look at slide 15 and 16, but the vaccinated are over six times more likely to be hospitalized and five times more likely to be infected in the first place. So the University of Idaho is focusing on the vaccination. So with that, we do have incentives to produce your vaccination card, which are being verified by a physician assistant. And then we are also doing drawings for $1,000 and $5,000 tuition credits. We have over 3,500 students who have participated in that program already. And, and the number continues to climb and we're going to continue that into November. So our hospital is not at crisis standards of care. We are currently at contingent standards of care here in Moscow. So I share that just to see where we're at. Just quickly, average number of students since early August has been five per week in quarantine and three per week in isolation. And currently today, we have only one in isolation. With that, all of our protocols, PPE, hand sanitizer, we've stayed consistent and toed the line. We are currently masking Moscow School District. Our local K through 12 has announced this week, they are continuing masking for the rest of the semester. Latah County is requiring masking in all county buildings and City of Moscow is requiring masking in all city buildings. So, and we have several businesses in Moscow proper who are also continuing to require masking in their businesses. So there, there's a lot going on. Everybody's working hard. But so far, we're, we're hanging in there and we're continuing with our protocols.
And Tony, as it relates to the large capacity football games, I know you have the big arena opening. Are you, how are you feeling confident that you're able to implement the protocols you need without any support from this board? I mean, in terms of what you need to do?
Yes, sir. We're, we are continuing masking for indoors. We're evaluating it in three-week periods. We've already said we are requiring masking through homecoming. So anything indoors, including the football games, will have mask requirements.
And that's being, it's not creating undue unrest on the campus?
We had one student withdraw for the semester because of the masking requirement. We have others that are maybe not happy, but we had one confirmed withdrawal that that was the reason why. So. So overall, we're gonna, we're calling that a success.
That's great. And any questions for Tony or University of Idaho? Great, thank you. I didn't see, I don't think I saw President Saturday, but I think I did see Daniel, which I don't see her on the screen right now. Danny, is Danny, are you, can you give us a quick update on Idaho State, if you're there?
I do. President Leibig, members of the board, President Saturday cannot be here today, but I have an update. As we've provided to the board in our communicable disease plan, we have four distinct operational level categories, orange, low risk, white, increased risk, gray, moderate risk, and black, high risk. We are currently operating at our white of increased risk. We have face coverings indoors, face covering outdoors for events over 150, 50, where distancing cannot be maintained. We have a asymptomatic screening program in place for students in housing and athletic that are unvaccinated. They may opt out if they are vaccinated. And we are ramping up those screening efforts in the next few weeks to be able to screen approximately 1,000 individuals weekly for those asymptomatic individuals. In addition, we have on-campus vaccination clinics and have provided several hundred vaccinations to our campus community. Every week, our university administrative council, our vice presidents and our presidents review our public health metrics weekly to determine our operational level. And we have asked campuses to prepare in the case that we do need to move to our next operational level, which would have expanded online and high flex instruction and move to skeleton crews for staff. Our hope is if we did move to that operational level, it would be for a short period of time and not the entirety of the semester. So we are being prepared in the case that is necessary. But right now, we are operating with the protocols that I've outlined. As far as our campus situation, we've had a, an increase in on-campus cases since the start of the semester that puts us about on par to the case rates that were happening during the height of the last surge. And for us, that's about 69 cases each week, respectively, for the last two weeks for all of our five campuses. Our positivity rate started the semester at around 1% and it's moved to about 4% for asymptomatic screening. And for the positivity rate of our symptomatic testing, that's been about 15 to 25%. We're, we've added additional contact tracers to keep that contact tracing program robust. And we're getting to those with, in less than 48 hours. So right now, we're continuing to feel comfortable at our current operational level, but we're, we're reviewing the data every single week and, and ready to make adjustments if needed. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Dani. Questions for Dani or Idaho State?
Thank you.
Is there one indicator you look at that would push you to that sort of hybrid model that you talked about? Or is it more of a subjective based on a bunch of different indicators, positivity, case rate? And how do you think about that?
Yeah, we have a number of metrics that we're using that take into consideration our campus case rates, but also our community situation and, and our health system information. So we're using all of that to inform our decisions. Also taking into heavy consideration our educational mission and what we've heard from students that in-person instruction is important and prioritizing that in light of the public health data. So it's, it's taking all of those factors into consideration.
Great. Thank you, Dani. President Trump, I think I saw you there earlier in the call, but I can't see you on the screen now. Are you still online?
I sure am. Thank you very much, President Leibig.
Thank you. You want to cover the current status of Boise State?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. We are currently requiring facial coverings indoors, on campus or outside in crowded locations. We're doing ongoing surveillance testing for high-risk groups that includes NCAA athletes, club sports, childcare center teachers. We have a robust contact tracing program. We have an isolation hall that allows us for our residential students to have a place to, who test positive to isolate for 10 days. And we allow, of course, off-campus students and employees to isolate or quarantine at home. We launched a CLIA certified lab and a testing center. We have done over 46,000 tests for the region to date. We, we developed a contact tracing program to continue to be robust and we launched a vaccine clinic in February of 2021. We've delivered over 7,000 doses of vaccine, of vaccine clinic for the, for the region. I'm very happy to report that the campus positivity rate for the past week was 3%, which is a 46% drop in positivity rate from the week prior. That's a 14% decrease in case numbers. It's a 64% drop since the peak in early September. We, if we add in the average rate of positivity from last weekend's pre-game testing, our current positivity rate on campus is approximately 1%. And we really ascribe that to the fact that we have preliminary data from a campus-wide survey, faculty, staff and students that suggests we have approximately an 88% vaccination rate for all populations on our campus. So we think that's really what's keeping the virus at bay. We're very conscious, being in the, in the large, a large metro center in the state, that with the rising cases that we heard about at the beginning of this meeting, that we want to preserve that testing capacity for our state, because there are people who have been exposed or who are symptomatic or who are in high-risk areas. And we actually think we can support that testing more if we're not using that testing for big events. So as our sister institutions, we've asked for indoor and outdoor when you cannot physically distance that six feet, that people mask. But we don't think we need to require that testing for those events anymore, because we need to preserve that testing for our healthcare system.
So President Trump, what does that mean for, for your upcoming, you know, obviously you have a different level of attendance than the other universities as it relates to athletics, particularly football. What does that mean for the upcoming game in, in a week?
Well, we've been meeting very regularly with our healthcare CEOs, with Central District Health. And I've been in conversation, sharing that information with President Leibig. They feel it would be an undue burden on the healthcare system right now for us to use that testing capacity for our football games. So, and given the, the low rates that we're seeing, we think what we'll do is we'll offer people the opportunity, if they would like to, or if they, if they cannot test at home when they suspect they've been exposed, we can test them before they enter the stadium. So we'll provide testing capacity at the stadium. We'll also provide, as we have several times before, a vaccination tent if people want to get access to that vaccine for free. So we're going to provide that testing for folks who are concerned they may have been exposed or who are, are just anxious about their own COVID status. We can provide that testing capacity, but we can't do the large-scale testing that we had originally hoped, given what we're seeing in the, in terms of the need for testing in the metro area.
Understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions for President Trump? I appreciate all four of those updates. You know, the reason I wanted to have this conversation, have this board meeting is, you know, because as a state, we've gone into crisis standards of care. I think it's important for this board and to just be sure that, that, that activities on our campus, both academic and extracurricular, aren't in any way contributing to the stress that our hospital system is feeling. But, you know, my personal opinion, you know, based on what I heard today, is that our four university campuses might be the safest place to be in the state when you look at the protocols that they have in place. So I, I really like to thank all of our institutional leadership for just the phenomenal job you're doing and continue to do to manage through the, through the pandemic. And at least personally, I don't see, you know, we've delegated the authority to make these decisions to our president. I personally, and I'd open this up for board discussion, I don't see that this board needs to take any additional action, other than those that we've previously taken, other than just to say we, we support our leaders. So, but I'll open it up to the board for, for their comments.
Totally agree.
I agree, Kurt. I, I would add, and I'm sure we're doing it already, there were some requirements and other rules we relaxed last year, which essentially that relaxation has expired. We need to revisit that, but I'm sure board staff are dealing with that.
So I guess what I would ask our presidents, keep doing what you're doing, but if you, if you see material changes, please keep board staff informed in real-time basis so that, so that this board can, can stay informed. And as it relates to the K-12 system, I think Dr. Grover gave us four or five things and the superintendent supported of things that I think we need to be thinking about and working towards in future meetings, recognizing at the end of the day, I agree with what Sean said, we are a local controlled state and I don't, I don't think we want to change that. But if there are things we can do to free up resources, looking at the enrollment versus ADA, I mean, some of these things I think as a board, we need to look at and to do, and just like we did last year, look for ways to support our school districts as they make the best of what is a very difficult situation. So any, Sean, did you, yeah?
Well, and do you have a timeline? Has staff put together perhaps a draft timeline when we might do that? It does seem like there's some urgency involved with those.
Specific to the ADA enrollment discussion?
Correct.
Yeah. Tracy, did you want to comment? Cause I know you've been in conversation with the governor's office on that.
Thank you, President Leibig, members of the board. So we do have a timeline. We're waiting for the October upload of the attendance and enrollment data. So we can look at the actual data and how things have played out up to that point. The options we've been talking about are the same as those we discussed at the last regular board meeting around the legislation the board had approved and having an emergency clause on that, which would then allow for enrollment to be used for the current school year, which then would happen based on legislative action in the new calendar year when they come back into session or doing another temporary rule. Last year, when we did that temporary rule, it was in December. And so we have some time, but right now we're really waiting for the data to be uploaded and reviewed to, so we can look at the different models and how that'll impact the school district's funding.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh, Dr. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to comment that the unfinished learning work group is about to bring some recommendations forward. It's really important, I believe, that we focus on support for our teachers. We hear every day more stories about how stressed they are. Much of what I believe will come from our work is focused on leveling the playing field for our districts to make sure that all districts have access to the same sort of resources and support. If we're going to accomplish the unfinished learning goals, that requires teachers to be able to accelerate learning for all students. We can't manufacture more time for them to make up what they've lost. So I believe those recommendations will be really heavy on professional development mentoring and resources to support accelerating learning in, in the three focus areas, which for the sake of our new board members, board is focusing on K-4 literacy, adding fourth grade because of the mistime. Five through nine math research across the country telling us math is very much, was hit very hard in terms of the unfinished learning. And then credit recovery at the high school. But with that focus, that the committee's been looking at what recommendations they might make for expenditure, some available funds and some other resources. So, Mr. Chairman, I, or Mr. President, I assume, I, I believe that there will, will be a need for a meeting pretty soon to look at those recommendations. Time is really important here. We don't have a lot of time to wait. We have to move swiftly, I think. We're going to get with our current students.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, and I appreciate your leadership on that work and I look forward to, to seeing the recommendations. Any, any further comments or for today?
Mr. President, this is
Yes, Superintendent.
Really quickly, I know we had a hard stop at five o'clock, but some of those recommendations that are coming nationally, we've had a couple of discussions about. I, I appreciate Board Member Kio recognizing that, you know, K-12 has a different setup than higher ed, which I commend higher ed for everything they've been able to put into place. But K-12 was really governed by their local board. So I think as a board, we're going to have to come up with some quick creative solutions to help some of these issues. One of them that I've heard tossed around, and this is just a thought as we close up and leave, is maybe taking some of those student teachers that are already student teaching and putting them, replacing that student teaching experience with a substitute experience out, out in the state for Idaho. Like I said, we already have the 10 million from the governor that my department will be deploying for substitutes. So there's, there are some quick wins there. I think if Dr. Clark, your group that you're leading could look at some of those, and just a thought, while we have the universities on with us, maybe to start that conversation, thinking in the back of their heads, could we, could we borrow some of those student teachers? I, I think that's a real win right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dr. Clark.
We actually already have put that in motion. We have asked today that the student teaching folks from the universities meet with us next week. And actually Peter was invited to that meeting. He and I had a conversation this morning, Sherri, about it. Tracy assures me that the board policies and procedures already are in place to allow us to do that under our work, our work-based learning. We think that's a very viable partial solution. There are somewhere between 170 and 200 student teachers currently in our four public institutions. We also are bringing INU, College of Idaho and BYU Idaho into the conversation. I, I believe that the experience that those students will get in a variety of settings will be maybe even more, maybe even richer than get in a single setting each semester. So we're, thank you for bringing that up, Superintendent, and just we'll be pointing back as quickly as we can. Again, time is really important here. We keep hearing about our teachers' stress and their burnout, giving up their prep times to substitute in other classes, not having their specials during the week because those folks are all being needed for subs. So we think that's a viable alternative and we're moving as quickly as we can work with the universities to see how we can make it happen.
Yeah, I think it's a terrific idea and it was obviously one of the key things that Dr. Grover brought up in terms of that substitute shortage. So and I think we can move then, I think as you said, Dr. Clark, very few states have the K through 20 system. So this is, as you should have said, this is an example where we can really leverage the fact that you know, we're one system and can move quickly on this, those kinds of ideas. So thank you for Superintendent and Dr. Clark for bringing that up. Any other comments before we adjourn for the weekend and the week? And, okay, thank you, everybody, for your time today and your flexibility to get together this quickly. Have a wonderful weekend. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. Thank you, Sean. So we are adjourned. Thank you.